Meeting to order. First order on the agenda is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Anybody online? All right. Minutes. Do we have a? Over the minutes?
Commissioner Williams would move to approve. October 29th or 2030th minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second that.
All right. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda. Is a discussion of the Terrebonne community?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Can you hear me okay? Great. For the record, my name is Tanya Saltzman. I'm a senior planner. I'm just here in my, in a capacity as emcee to introduce our special guest stars who come from other parts of our, the Community Development Department. So with me here, I have Nathaniel Miller, Associate Planner. He is from our current planning side of the shop. Some of you may have interacted with him before. I'm not quite sure, but Nate will be doing a presentation about planning and land use and zoning in Terrebonne. So this is intended to be kind of a continuation of introduction to Terrebonne. Terrebonne 101, 102, whatever, whatever you choose, but in, in a, in the goal of getting the commission oriented before we embark on the larger Terrebonne community plan, which we anticipate will begin in January. So this is just meant to orient you to last time we had the, or about a month ago, the panel discussion that had guests from various infrastructure-related groups. And I think we all found that very valuable. I know I did. And this will be digging in a little bit deeper to kind of the nuts and bolts of how Terrebonne works, a little bit about the history and the zoning, kind of the specific land use issues. We also have with us additional special guest star Todd Cleveland, our onsite wastewater manager behind me in the blue, and he'll be available, he'll be participating in this presentation and available to answer questions. So with that, I'll hand it over to Nathaniel. Thanks.
As Tanya mentioned, can everyone hear me okay? Great. Tanya mentioned, my name is Nathaniel Miller. I'm an associate planner in the planning division. It's great to be here tonight and presenting on Terrebonne. I think it's a very timely discussion, given what we're seeing in the area. Improvements which are planned. We have developed a slideshow for you and a presentation that will be somewhat high level. The intent is to maybe provide you with a sampling of different topics and issue areas that will become more relevant as we dive into the Terrebonne Community Plan update. There will be questions, I'm sure, and we've also wanted this interaction to be very interactive between the commissioners and staff. So as you have questions, feel free to give me notice and I'll, we'll stop the presentation. We'll answer any questions. We also might be joined by other members of the planning staff too, if that's, it's more specific of expertise. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started on the presentation. As Tanya mentioned, it is titled Planning and Land Use in Terrebonne. And the presentation tonight is going to be divided into four sections. I'm first going to talk a little bit about the history and designation of Terrebonne as a unincorporated community. Next, I'll be talking about the zone districts in Terrebonne. Then we'll switch and talk a little bit about development trends. And this is just to give the commissioners some idea of what we've seen in the current planning side in terms of development, the types of reviews that we do, and we'll be looking at land use, building, septic as well. And then last, we want to talk about some growth considerations for Terrebonne, I think, looking specifically within the unincorporated community area itself, which is about 790 acres. And then also thinking about what it means for outside that area, which we could consider greater Terrebonne, and kind of the implications of development, both inside this area and outside. So starting with history of Terrebonne and its designation. We know that this area of Deschutes County was inhabited by the Warm Springs Indian Tribe, and settlers began to arrive in the late 1800s, early 1900s. And it first started as a small farming community. And to understand the development at that time, or kind of the, the action that was happening within Deschutes County, it's good to look at three federal acts that were passed in that era. The first one is the Home Steck Act of 1862, the Desert Act, Land Act of 1877, and the Carry Act of 1894. And specifically, it was the Desert Act of 1877 and the Carry Act, which was responsible for the large-scale infrastructure projects. So, excuse me, specifically the irrigation canals that moved water throughout Deschutes County at that time. So with the availability of land and water being supplied to the land, it really was the, the draw factor, pull settlers westward and into the region. In about 1909, the township of Hillman was created, which is modern-day Terrebonne. It was the name itself was the combination of the last names of James Hill and E. H. Harriman, who were both railroad pioneers at that time. So they, they cut their last names in half and made one name out of it. Also at that time, we saw more formal development take place within Hillman. And this was the plat of Hillman, which was created. And this was an important first step for Terrebonne as a community. So the lots of the Hillman plat were sold around the United States. As the story goes, there was some controversy around this event by one of the developers who was, who was selling properties. And there was some fraudulent behavior. So it reflected poorly on the community. And as a result of that, the residents decided to change the name from Hillman to Terrebonne in 1911. So why mention this, this Hillman plat? Well, it's important because today, it is the same plat that we use to review development. And this is from single-unit development all the way up to multi-scaled resident, or excuse me, commercial development. There have been some vacated roadways in the plat. There has been some replating within the plat itself, but by and large, this is still the same plat. And it's important to note that the plot sizes on this plat are smaller in nature than what we would see normally today. So they are 25 feet wide by 100 feet long. And what we find is that most property owners believe their lots to be what we know as their tax lot. But in fact, the actual legal unit of land, which is inside their tax lot, is much smaller. And in most cases, what you have are properties which people identify as their tax lot, but they actually have multiple legal units of land within them. Right? This creates a little bit of, of challenge, but we'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. But it's important that we know kind of where the, the basis of this is. And so we talk about the larger commercial reviews and what that means for property owners. You'll have a frame of reference. There are historical resources within the unincorporated community. The current Terrebonne Community Plan recognizes three historic buildings. The Ladies Pioneer Club, which was built in 1911. The Oregon Trunk Railroad, which is also built in 1911, and the Grange Hall Building, which was built in 1925. Of these, it's important to note that the Ladies Pioneer Club is listed as a Gold V Historic Resource currently. As a side note, the Ladies Pioneer Club was the first structure in Terrebonne to receive electricity, and it was used as a venue for entertainment, social events, and church. So as I mentioned, there is what we would call kind of loosely Greater Terrebonne. The area that we're going to talk to tonight and the zones are specific to that unincorporated community area. But their area outside of Terrebonne does play a major role in things that happen with inside that designated space. And we'll speak specifically to that when we start looking at agritourism and Smith Rock State Park. But just being aware that the implications of, of any type of action within the community should be taken into consideration, kind of what's happening around it as well. Now, looking at the unincorporated community of Terrebonne, this is a special designation that's given to Terrebonne by the state. So it's classified as an unincorporated community. And it's important to note that under state law, unincorporated communities are governed by AOR 660 or Division 22, and I'll talk about that in a moment as well. So there's a special designation and then the rules which apply are specific to unincorporated communities. It's also important to know that within unincorporated communities, there's four different classifications of unincorporated communities. The first one being an urban unincorporated community. The second being a rural community, which is the designation of Terrebonne. The third being a rural service center. And then the fourth being a resort community. So when we start talking about plan updates, what we need to be thinking about and looking specifically within Division 22, we will be looking at that development action, which is specific to a rural community. And by way of reference, Tumalo is the other rural community that we have here within Deschutes County. But that is a special designation that we will look at more closely as, as you kind of embrace the, the planning project and move forward. So here's like one slide that we have on Division 22. Pull that up here. And for the commissioners, what I want to like to do here is just make a bookmark, if you will. So this is just to kind of let the commissioners know you know, what Division 22 is and where it can be found. A little bit of history about Division 22. It was adopted by the Oregon Land Conservation and Development Commission in 1994. We went through a brief code update in 1997 to become compliant with Division 22. And the takeaway for the planning commission is to really understand that it's intended to allow for greater flexibility and speed for, for planning and zoning for unincorporated communities. So this will surface again in the future as we engage the community plan update. There we go. And we do want to include a slide here, just recognizing the most recent community plan update done in Tumalo. Similarly, this was by comparisons similar to Terrebonne in that its designation is a rural community. The plan process started in 2022 and it completed in 2024. And it was an informative process for the planning division, and we learned a lot of lessons during that process. So we're, we're hopeful that as we engage with this community plan update, we'll be able to kind of reflect on those lessons learned during that process as well. Next, we'll kind of switch gears and talk about zoning districts with inside the unincorporated community. And again, this is really that 790-acre piece of designated spaces, an unincorporated community. And I'll move through the four different zone districts and kind of explain the comp plan designation of each one and kind of the general characteristics of that zone district. So as I mentioned, there are four different districts within the unincorporated community. The residential district, the residential five-acre minimum district, the commercial district, and the commercial rural district. And you can kind of see them highlighted on the screen there in that image.
So which is the commercial and which is the commercial rural? I'm assuming it's like the pink and the orange?
Yeah, exactly.
Which would be which?
And we'll talk about that in these coming slides. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so first we'll talk about the residential district. This is the largest district with inside the unincorporated community. There's about 475 acres, and it largely covers the original Hillman plat. You can kind of see it there, the space of the commercial zoning is in the middle. And then it extends northward into the Angus Acres subdivision, which is just north of the Hillman plat there. Some characteristics about this zone district is that it supports higher residential densities. We're talking half-acre lot sizes to five acres. And it's designated to those lots which receive community water. The next zone district is the residential five-acre minimum district. This is the second largest district in the community. It occupies about 250 acres. So what's unique about this zone district is it's meant to preserve the rural character of Terrebonne, and it supports larger parcel sizes, so a minimum of five acres. And it's also located over those properties which are not receiving or intended to receive community water. So you can see it there as it is kind of outside that original Hillman plat. It is extended kind of down south below the Hillman plat and above Odom Avenue. And then in the northwest, over that section of Northwest Lower Bridge Way, above the Hillman plat, and then eastward on the east side of the railway line.
Nathaniel?
Yes.
Can I ask you, since those zones are outside of that Hillman plat, what, what's the origin of those?
That's a great question. So the, as I understand it, and I could probably find someone who is more versed in the, the history of our comp plan updates. But over time, what we had is a situation where the urban, or I'm sorry, excuse me, the unincorporated community area began to kind of grow. And so certain areas begin to be included above and beyond the Hillman plat. And that, those timeframes are listed in our current, our Terrebonne Community Plan. You can read a little bit about that, but I would probably invite someone else who knows a little bit more about the legislative history to incorporate those areas.
I see.
Here it comes.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Planning Manager Will Groves and Peter, I'll let you chime in. You know a lot about this as well. But if you think about the Oregon land use system, you know, as, as zoning comes into effect, there's this question about, you know, what's property being used for today? So there are, there were areas that were forests, areas that were farm, and they were designated as such. There were cities, and then there were kind of smaller communities. And Terrebonne and Tumalo prior to 1994, were they, Peter, do you recall if they were designated as locally as rural service centers? Or how did we designate them prior to the urban, the unincorporated community rule?
Thank you, Will. Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. The, it's the unincorporated rule. So we're going to get a little backstory or context. As Nathaniel showed, in, in 1994, we were responsible for identifying a number of, of rural land use patterns. And Tumalo and Terrebonne were recognized as rural communities under the unincorporated communities rule. And, you know, they essentially, you know, I haven't looked at the plan recently, but they, as Nathaniel pointed out, they looked at characteristics that represented a built environment. So there was enough in 1994 beyond the Hillman plat to show that there was this, this vibrancy as a unincorporated, you know, town. And so through the process of, of being audited by the Department of Land Conservation and Development, the county made findings justifying the boundary as you see it today. And so it made sense at the time, you know, it didn't, in this case, the five-acre minimum district, it wasn't EFU, you know, the lotting pattern showed this kind of rural density. And so the county could demonstrate that it made sense to fold it into this boundary. Given its, its land use pattern and kind of integration or synergy that it has with within the, you know, other elements of, of the town and elementary school, you know, fire department, things of that sort. In terms of other designations, like rural service centers, there are areas that don't meet the kind of qualifications of an unincorporated community. And they can, they can have rural service center designations. At the, at the time that we were complying with this rule, we designated Sun River as an urban unincorporated community. That's its designation today. Lapine at the time, right? Same thing. It was larger than a rural community, so it was an urban unincorporated community. And essentially, that boundary, for all intents and purposes, is the boundary that the city, you know, leadership, you know, that's in place today, but the fore, the forefathers had recognized this would be an appropriate boundary for city limits. So it really, to get to the kind of your question, it's, it, there was, there was a point in time that the county was, all counties were obligated to look at their land, their built environment. And if it wasn't exclusive farm use, if it wasn't forest land, and it wasn't exception land, larger tracts that predominantly rural residential that had some infrastructure, this rule allowed us to carve out these communities. And what's so, Nathaniel will talk about this, and you'll recall it from Tumalo, but you can urbanize in these, in these communities if the infrastructure's there without having to go through some of the more painstaking land use goals like Goal 11. You know, Goal 11 really doesn't apply, you know, it applies, but if you don't need to take an exception if, if centralized water or centralized sewer are available in these locations. So obviously, you, you are well-versed in the, the type of investment that's going into this community by the, by the sewer district. And, and we have Todd here, who likely will be giving you context of why they mobilized as quickly as they did. But anyway, that's, that's the broader context.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks, Peter.
Yeah, thanks.
So when thinking about residential districts in the unincorporated community, it's important to keep in mind that there are two residential districts. One that supports high-des, the city residential, and then one that supports larger lot sizes. And this one here, we'll kind of move to the next slide, is the one that supports larger parcel sizes. Next, we'll talk about the commercial districts. This is the the biggest of the two commercial districts. It occupies 45 acres. And it's located on the south end of the Hillman plat, and it is predominantly eastward of Highway 97. So it, it abuts it abuts Highway 97 on the east side, but then goes eastward and ends where there is a canal or where 12th Street would be on the Hillman plat. It does extend westward in a couple of different locations, past Highway 97, and then a little bit further eastward, kind of along that south edge towards the railroad tracks and kind of that boot shape. It's important to know that this zone district supports pedestrian-friendly commercial centers. And then we'll kind of circle back to this a little bit later in the presentation. Next is the, and lastly, is the commercial rural district. This is the smallest district within the unincorporated community. It's 20 acres. And it's just northward of the commercial district that we just talked. It's different in that it's not compatible or not deemed to be compatible by the comp plan for pedestrian-friendly commercial development. Its uses are typically associated with small-scale truck and heavy equipment. So just a different type of commercial zoning. And then lastly, we want to kind of turn our attention to Greater Terrebonne and its zoning. So kind of looking outward of that designation of the unincorporated community, you'll notice that it's predominantly zoned EFU or exclusive farm use. We do have a couple of different exception area zones there. The MUAT 10, which is abutting the unincorporated community to the north. And then RR 10, which abuts the, the community just directly to the south. So what you will see when you lift the zoning layer from these maps is a real distinction between the farm uses, which are at the perimeter, and then those more high-density residential uses, which are inside the community. We are about halfway through the presentation, so I just want to pause momentarily and ask if there are any questions about what we've covered so far. Okay. So next, we'll talk about development in Terrebonne. And specifically, as I mentioned earlier, we put together some, some charts and some data for you, kind of as a, yes?
So that exception residential just south of the 790 acres, could that be incorporated into the unincorporated at any time? Or we're all unincorporated, like stopped at a certain year?
Yeah, Peter, do you have background?
It's a great question. It's, there's two parts to that question. We have, to the, I'll take the, the second part of that question first. We have heard maybe this planning commission, this planning commission, when we had our work plan, I think, not, maybe not last year, but the year before, there's been interest in Deschutes River Woods becoming a rural community like Terrebonne, like Tumalo. And as a refresher, the way the rules are currently constructed, state law says that you have to go back and look at the built environment in 1994. And that was the opportunity to, for a county to justify that there was the basis to declare a rural area as a rural community. So Deschutes River Woods in 1994 was, and still is respectfully, it's rural residential. Now, it has some, you know, it's got a, a gas station and I think a little store there close to the Highway 97. But it's, that's, that rule prohibits the ability to kind of be proactive and say, the community is really interested in this vibrant rural, you know, environment, and would love to see opportunities to have commercial uses and supportive uses. State law doesn't allow it. Your first part of the question was, you know, can land that's just outside of a rural community boundary be considered as part of a rural community? And technically, the answer is yes. It is complicated. It happens, I'm not aware that it's happened recently in the state, but it's the, the, the basis for it is similar to an urban growth boundary. You have to demonstrate the need. What's the need that warrants of the community, rural community boundary to expand? Can that need be met in the current boundary? And then if that, presumably, if that need can be met, then you go through what are called the statutory priorities, and they want us, the, the state law wants to send you away from resource land. So it is possible, but it, it is not a frequent set of circumstances, in part because, as we talked about with both Tumalo in the past and Terrebonne recently, and as part of this process, is a lot of these rural communities don't have a lot of urban-like infrastructure to serve the land. Things could change in Terrebonne over time, which maybe it makes sense. But I think that's been a kind of prohibitive factor when you look across the state to these little rural community hamlets. Why they're not growing is because they're kind of self-limiting by the infrastructure that's in existence currently.
Oh, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. So I'm kind of just looking at a map, and I see like a large portion of properties just south of Odom that are an acre, an acre and a quarter. I don't know, maybe 50 years, you know, quite a few. What will, what would, why would a property over there want to be included in the unincorporated? What's the benefit of? Of that?
Coming within that designation?
Yes.
Well, I think we would probably need to look more closely at, under Division 22 and see what rights are afforded. So I think a developer would really need to analyze what it is that they were trying to accomplish. And then just, as we would do in any situation, go to the, go to the code and understand, you know, what would be, you know, possible. But I think, as I understand how Division 22 works, is that you're largely looking at legislative act, action to initiate, you know, changes on land as an unincorporated community.
And what I would add is, why someone would want to come in is, as this slide is tease it up for you, is that the ability to, to, to divide land and make smaller lot sizes or parcel size, you can do it in the Terrebonne community. If, if, if it's, I mean, you know that there's a land division code, there's minimum lot sizes. So if there was the need and you were proximate, and you had a business plan, presumably, one might make the case. You know what? I would like to engage the Community Development Department to explore this opportunity because by bringing in this larger rural property, the opportunity to build it more to kind of urban standards, obviously, may have some real value in contrast to what's possible in a rural zoning. And then to the extent that, for example, if there might be a housing need, and you have a couple acres and you can build and you can build, you can land divide based on urban densities, then you, you know, you, you can take it from there. It's the pro forma would could put, you know, hypothetically justify why it would be worth adding that land to a rural community.
Understand, thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Okay. So what we want to do in this next section is, um, yeah, basically demonstrates, uh, to the planning commission, what we've seen in terms of permitting that are characteristic of this unincorporated community. So we look at building permits, land use permits, uh, and, and talking about septic permitting as well. So over the last ten years, in terms of land use permitting, the majority of the file types that we see is a property line adjustment. And the majority of those property line adjustments, as you can imagine, are consolidations. So when people come in, they want to do an addition to their home or they want to get a septic upgrade. Our policy has been to, um, allow for that person to go through a property line consolidation and consolidate those units of land such that they can get their building permits and they won't, um, have any type of conflict with the code for, for setbacks. So we, that, those are the most common type of land use file that we see come in and applied for. Next, we do have some conditional use permitting, some site plan reviews as well, but they're, they're quite small. As you can see there, um, conditional uses maybe were about five over the last ten years. And we'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. As far as building permits over the last ten years, uh, single unit dwellings are the most frequent permit type applied for. Next to that are detached residential accessory structures. And then next, most popular permit type are for single unit dwelling remodels or additions. We also see other types of permitting in the unincorporated community, like for solar panels, for signed permits and such, but those are relatively small. So the permit types that you see here represented in the bar graph are those which are the most common types. Now I want to invite, uh, my colleague Todd Cleveland to come up and talk a little bit about the septic permitting and trends that we've seen them over the last ten years.
Hey there. All right. Hello. Thank you for having me here. Uh, Todd Cleveland, uh, Deschutes County Onsite Wastewater Manager, which is, you know, septic systems, right? That's what everybody knows it does. But they're, now they're wastewater treatment plants quite frequently. But the last ten years, if you look at this chart, you can really see kind of why we're having a conversation about sewer, right? Why they've been a pursue pursuit of sewer. The overwhelming majority of permits have been repair permits. And many of those repairs are called, are considered what are called reasonable repairs. In other words, we don't, it doesn't meet code. We're doing the best we can to make it work. So we can fudge on certain things and we may use alternative treatment technologies or advanced treatment systems to treat the water, really clean it up and then try to, try to get it to go way into the ground. The biggest problem we have in, in Terrebonne is it's not Terrebonne, it's solid rock, right? It's a shelf of rock, um, with a tiny little thin layer of soil on top of it. And then over thousands of years, there's been a development of a carbonate layer, right? Where that basalt area is, so it's like sealed up, it's almost like taking a, a carbonate putty and sealing all the cracks. So where Angus Acres is, for example, they have a community system. They had to fracture that ground to make it be able to absorb water. So, um, and when you look at the building permits, those new building permits have occurred in Angus Acres and in Terrebonne Estates, which are on large community systems. The commercial repairs is a little bit misleading. Part of the commercial repairs, so many of the facilities like the Oliver Lemons and, and some of the restaurants there, they were, they were under county permits for years. But the rules have changed and when those systems fail because of the type of wastewater they generate, because restaurants and facilities that produce food are really high strength waste. It need to be treated in a sophisticated way. Those have to go to Department of Environmental Quality. The county has contracted with the Department of Environmental Quality to issue permits for small flows and regular systems. That kind of is out of our league, right? Or out of our contract with, with the state. So Oliver Lemons and most of the restaurants in Terrebonne have had to upgrade with DEQ permits over year, over the last few years in particular. And those permits were also done as reasonable repairs and they've really struggled to keep those systems functional. And the concern is they've spent a lot of money to keep those systems working. They're not really adequate to serve the use. And so they're living on this edge of potentially failing and having to close their business. So that's where you got that increase in pressure to get a sewer, sewer district, right? A sanitary district and pursue sewer. And fortunately, there's been that synergy with Redmond where Redmond's doing an expansion and they're looking to connect to the city of Redmond. It's been a, and they also received quite a bit of ARPA funding, which has really benefited the community. But that, the, the other component of this is these residential lots where we have to deal with them frequently. Those, those homes have been there for a long time. Septic systems are really not a permanent solution. They didn't, they fail, right? So you have to have repair here where those tiny little lots with that density, that's really urban density. It has rural infrastructure on it. It's not set up to maintain this forever, right? So septic systems, you usually have a, you know, it's supposed to be able to serve the life. While those tiny little lots where we have to do some consolidations to expand, that's really limiting. And then the soil conditions are extremely poor, so you need larger areas, right? To be able to, to, to serve those uses. So, um, that's really kind of what's happened in, in Terrebonne. And so it led to this, the sanitary district. With the, with the formation of the, the district in twenty twenty three, it started, I think we started really having that conversation in about twenty nineteen. Moving, moving forward. So it's, here we are. We've got a district formed in twenty twenty three. Primary, the, the, the primary push was to get that right down highway ninety seven, serve some of those areas. It's serving the south end of town because that's going to be closer to the connection to get to Redmond. And so that's where they're starting with, but to get this funded, to get it, they've got pipes in the ground now, from my understanding, in the roadways. And to get the rest of it funded is going to be a, a, a critical component. But once you get that built, you have to pay the debt service. So you need enough connections to keep it going and it's good, it's a critical mass of, of connections that are paying monthly fees and connection charges, system development charges. So not only will it help keep people operating, right, their businesses, it'll produce, it'll give people opportunities on their residential properties as well. There's a number of properties that have never been developed, that we've had to deny properties, septic systems that will become buildable, right? People will be able to utilize those properties. The, uh, one of the examples there is the, the Mobile Home Park. They're, they have very old systems. They've been struggling since Roger Everett was here, right? As the director, environmental health director, um, twenty five years ago. So, uh, they were exploring sewer back then. It kind of fizzled out. Here we are. We made a lot of progress. They've got the sanitary district. They have a plan. They're looking at funding mechanisms. They have sewer lines in the ground. They're hoping to have that completed and start connecting people by early twenty twenty eight. That's when I talked to them. I talked to a representative last week, you know, maybe by the end of twenty twenty seven. Having experienced this kind of situation in numerous communities, it takes, it takes a while. Even with, with all things coming together, um, you know, that would be if twenty twenty eight, we started in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Ten years, takes about ten years. Seen it in Oregon Water Wonderland too. La Pine, when they expanded into Kegel, that's in the city, they just finally got that done. It took about eight or nine years. So it takes a while, but once it does, it can really provide opportunities for economic development, but it provides security as well.
Can I ask on that point, sir?
Is that okay? Yes, go ahead.
Cause yeah, this, this is somewhat similar, but somewhat different South County situation came into my mind too. And I'm just, I'm trying to recall, uh, the trajectory of what happened down there with goal eleven and how does the state? You know, I guess my question is if, you know, once, once you sewer an area like that, besides serving existing uses, it also provides almost an incentive for more growth and more expansion. I know a lot of folks worry about sprawl as a consequence of sewer systems and stuff like that. How does the state view, um, this?
I, I can handle that one. Commissioner Hoffcamp, the, you, you are not wrong that, um, and our chair has mentioned as a resident of the sister's country, how, um, in a municipality in a city, once the city of sisters, invested in a sewer treatment plant, it, it dramatically changed, uh, the, the, the community, just opportunities for the school district, the schools to, to expand and, uh, and, and other, uh, residential and business opportunities. In this case, with the Tumalo sanitary district, you know, being successful in, in the near, in the, in the near future, sewer will just be available within the boundary. So you, so there's, there's going to be, uh, great potential, uh, to develop those lots that have not been able to be, accessed through or maximized through, through septic systems. They'll now be developable and, um, and so I think you can, one can project the real possibility of seeing real infill. But sewer cannot go out, so cannot be provided to uses outside that boundary without a goal eleven exception. So why, why the, the sanitary district can run their sewer line outside the boundary west ultimately to Redmond's wetland treatment complex. Uh, none of the adjoining properties or nearby properties can tap into that sewer line, without taking a goal eleven exception, and that would be very, very difficult to the, the way that that law is set up. You, it's, it's just not available because it's proximate to one's property. So that's how the state, um, uh, manages rural development in a way that is conscientious of, of unintended consequences in the rural environment.
Okay.
May I offer?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna, uh, let the group know, just timing it on Todd's presentation. On Monday, the Terrebonne sanitary district, uh, hadn't provided an update to the board of county commissioners. Be interested in, 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 in listening and, and in that conversation. I just wanted to share with you my notes. They mentioned, first I should back up, uh, listening to them just underscores why the timing of this community plan update is so ripe. They are clearly have, have, are, have aspirations to get sewer of, uh, in the ground plumbed in, ready for, for properties to take advantage of it in just a, a couple of years. And so the, the opportunity, uh, that that sewer, uh, infrastructure represents for this community necessitates this community plan and any corresponding updates to our zoning code. They mentioned that this spring they're going to reach out and I, I'm paraphrasing, they are going to exercise a process to, um, see if other properties may want, who are not currently in the district, may want to annex into it. So give an opportunity to expand the boundary. They are, I think you are all aware, they are not a taxing district. That was a, that was a deliberate choice of them. They are, they are a sanitary district, which gives them the ability to, they are quasi municipal government now, but there's sources of revenue. Todd mentioned ARPA funding, the county provided ARPA funds to ensure capacity at the modernized Redmond wastewater treatment plant. They're getting grants. There's some, there's some forgivable loan, potentially some loan programs, uh, through the Department of Environmental Quality. And, and so they, they have a lot of irons in the fire. They're very optimistic about taking advantage of those, those funding mechanisms. The other thing they said more than once is they are really excited and it sounds like there may be some tire kickers, you know, just people kind of expressing interest. They're really hopeful that they can at some point in the future land a mixed use development. So a big project and these are just my translation of what that means. They didn't offer that, but I'm telling you what I think this means. Landing a, a major development, what's right now is not possible because of the superficial geology and the complications of, of, of having reliable septic. If they could have land a, a mixed use development, you guys can all conceptualize what that could be. It would do a couple of things. It would, you know, the, the tactic, the, the sanitary district could, they'd say, well, you know, you, you need, we need you to, you know, pay your proportionate share to improve the sewer system or put in the, the, the connection into the sewer line. We need you to pay system development charges. So everybody that taps into this fourth, you know, this, the sanitary district is going to have to pay a sewer development, system development charges, which all of you are aware. If you're in a city, um, or county, the only system development charge that we have is, uh, for the road department, uh, for impacts that certain development has on the transportation system. But one would pay a one time system of development charge, which, which I don't know what their methodology is, but it's likely a few thousand dollars. And then you would be paying monthly fees, no different than for those of us that live in a city, we pay monthly water and sewer, uh, fees. And so, um, I, uh, wanted to just kind of share that with you because it's there, they are, they, they have, they are motivated. They are maximizing their, their opportunities to look to outside funding. But they also in some respects are trying to manage a fee structure for existing development or in these infill lots for that matter, where the SDC and the, and the monthly rates, and I put it in air quotes, are reasonable. And what will make those reasonable over time as to, to, to Commissioner Hoffcamp's vote, it's all a matter of scale. If, if we, this is, we think this is going to be very, very promising for economic development. The more people that tie into the, the more people that are in the district, then therefore the more people that are paying SDCs that are, um, paying monthly fees, they then get the ability to pay off any debt and manage that system and therefore manage their rates. But for right now, it's, they are very much in, in their infancy. And so I want to echo Todd's point, like your experience is it takes about ten years. It can, and, and these are just one of the reasons why I think is working through these, these systems, it, it's complicated and, um, you know, it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing, you know, you gotta get it in and then you get it, you get a big fish and then, you know, or, you know, it's, it, it gets really complicated, but that's something I think this planning commission and certainly our staff are going to experience when you hear from, from our residents, our neighbors about their impressions of, of what it means to grow. These are going to be, I think, some themes that come up about how do you, what's the cost of service? What does it mean to grow? And this is an, this is one example of what's facing the community, um, in the very near future.
So what types of uses are allowed within the different zones? For example, restaurants, hotels, apartment buildings? I mean, is there limits on which types of uses have to go, have to go in which of the residential versus commercial zones?
Yeah, absolutely. So there are less, there are uses which are listed as permitted uses outright with like a site plan review.
Right.
Right? To meet the, the standards of the site plan code. Um, and then also there's conditional uses as well. So it would be basically like a property by property case, case by case. You know, analysis that would go into each one, kind of depending on what someone wanted to propose. But there are, you know, specific, there, to your point, um, Chair Cyrus, is that, yeah, the code does allow for different types of service industry, retail.
Cause like, I mean, given the proximity to the Smith Rocks and Redmond and everything else, I could certainly anticipate there would be demand for, you know, restaurants, hotel facilities, I mean, and in the residential, I assume apartment buildings, are they allowed outright in a residential?
So do you have some type of multi-family development units which, which are available, but I don't know it at that scale?
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I wasn't sure if there was a difference between the, like you say, the rural resident, the five acre residential versus the, the high, higher density residential as far as what other alternate types of multifamily, et cetera.
Yeah. And you're asking a great question here. So, um, the residential zone, the Terrebonne residential zone allows both single family and duplexes outright. And then as a conditional use allows multifamily housing, but in practice, we haven't seen a lot of that because of the sanitary, the septic limitations. So, you know, under the current regulations, um, and without an update to the So, you know, under the current regulations and without an update to the code, you know, you would be able to, in theory, you know, I think we've talked previously, if you're familiar with Newport Market and those houses that are, you know, very narrow that are next to it, you know, that's the sort of thing that you would conceive built on the existing 25 foot wide by 100 foot long lots. You know, that's the type of development that you might see is that type of townhouse development. Right now, that doesn't leave any room for septic, so, well, that's why you don't see it today. You know, the question I think they'll be before the community is, you know, what they want to see in terms of development. So, you know, there there'll be infrastructure sufficient to handle something that looks more like an apartment complex, you know, with the with the sewer and the improvements in the transportation infrastructure. And you know, of course, you recall from the Tumalo community that, you know, that they really didn't want to see more than four plexes, that they had some notions about what the community wanted to support. And so you can see that there's, there may be some tension in the future between a sanitary district that benefits from, you know, an increasing user base because that lowers the per user cost and a community that may want to see their rural character preserved. But with regard to commercial uses, the commercial district allows a variety of, it allows both residential uses, but it also allows things, to your point, like motels and recreational vehicle parks, churches, manufacturing production facilities, wholesale, mini storage. So a variety of kind of small scale, commercial and industrial uses are accommodated through the districts. And and definitely multifamily housing is one of them in the residential district.
Okay, yeah, I was just, like I say, I'm looking at the experience in Sisters and the the landscape of the city changed significantly once the sewer came in as far as densities, redevelopment of existing lots to to much higher density, multi multi homes on the same lot. And then, I mean, the apartment construction has gone crazy as far as the the large apartment complexes that have been built.
Can I ask?
So, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just first of all, maybe just a sample comment. Peter, I really appreciate your response, but, you know, that's often the sales pitch for those proposals, those big development proposals and stuff, there's a lot of excitement. But then they go and they get waivers to SDCs or they get property tax exemptions in order to have them pencil and so forth, and then it becomes a much more qualified discussion. But anyway, just that observation. But while I've got Mr. Cleveland up here. So since when I talk with my friends in the community and they asked me about development patterns and what to expect and so forth, I'm like, I'm not an expert, talk to the experts. But I always think it's all about the poop, for some reason. It all comes down to the, it always comes down to sewerin, direct development and stuff like that. But what kind of, to the extent that you can anticipate that, what kind, is there any objection anticipatable to this? To sewerin, Terrebonne, from, I don't know, the usual suspects? Or is it, who knows? Or is this just a, it's it's all good, it's all upside?
There's been some push, but when we had some public meetings, I participated with in at the Grange Hall, you know, to answer community questions about the septic concerns and about what was going on with septic. You have a single person on a fixed income, retired, social security, living in a house that's fine, the septic's working fine because it's tiny, they only use maybe 40 gallons a day, right? That's what can function. You you move a family in there and it, you know, you got kablooey. So, yeah, I, you know, that's, it's, I somewhat feel like I'm the guy with the black hat. I think Commissioner Kelly might have experienced that. So at one point in time, so, and Commissioner Cyrus probably has as well. So I felt like I've delivered bad news to people several times and that's what I, you know, all the people that that pushed for the sewer had had that conversation with me, right? They were, the people on the board have had that conversation with me that are on the Terrebonne Sanitary District. It's really, the the issue is, you know, we got to keep it under underground or when we start having these problems and we can't fix it, we've got a public health hazard. We start losing businesses, you start losing people's homes. That affects the community and people don't want their neighbors to to see, to struggle that way. So generally, even people that pushed back saw the benefit that it could create in the community. So the conversation in those open houses was, how do you constrain? You give that freedom, that ability to to provide an infrastructure that provides public health and gives people the ability to develop their properties and not change the, you know, the overall character. It's kind of a, you got to find that sweet spot. But it does give people that have been sitting on a piece of property that they couldn't do something with, that they think, oh, that guy Cleveland, he's evil. He's just trying to stop me from being able to do what I want, right? So, and it's not personal, it's all about the site condition. So, so, you know, but it is hard having those conversations with people. So, you know, being able to have a solution so that people can develop their property and build a house or 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 add on to their house.
Reminds me so much of this, again, some of the South County conversation that we had, but I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Hoffcamp for asking the question. The representatives from the Terrebonne Sanitary District on Monday, they recognized the leadership of Chris Dodi, who is actively, you know, they're doing transportation improvements outside of, ODOT's leading the Highway 97 improvements, but there are road improvements that are happening within Terrebonne proper, where they're doing street improvements and they are putting in pipe right now because it's easier to put it in as the road's being, you know, reconstructed than 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 cutting it open. But they also really complimented Todd for his leadership. And, you know, the community was, you know, facing the challenge, I'm just reiterating what Todd said, that, you know, the lotting pattern, the lifespan of these septic systems as families change and evolve and property turns over, their, Terrebonne was, you know, dangerously close to, you know, having, you know, significant failures and what that means to a vibrant community in that part of our county. And the representatives that have led the the district process that are now staff or on the board, I think are are carrying that baton forward. The last thing I wanted to say is, I think they're very, very mindful. You, all of you probably know this, it's worth repeating. These alternative treatment technologies, these onsite septic systems, the technologies are extraordinary in terms of how how well they can treat onsite wastewater. They are expensive. They're tens of thousands of dollars. And that's just the cost of what it means to put in an onsite septic system when when Todd's team, you know, administering the onsite wastewater rules, which are are at the state, that when they require it, my, what the sanitary district representative is saying is they're really trying, they're cognizant of that cost and they're trying to, they're committed to to getting it below that cost because that's, you know, that's that's always going to be the comparison, you know. I could put in a septic system and now you're saying, what's the alternative of plumbing into a a centralized line? Oh, it's, I think they they may have said it's, they're hoping it can be a third of the cost, you know. So you're looking at, you know, maybe upwards to, this is all ballpark, this isn't gospel, but, you know, 30,000 on on one side versus, you know, 10,000 on the other, which you can factor into mortgage. And not that you could do the same thing with a septic system, but just more more context. But I I think it's important to recognize that Todd and his team were were offering warning signs and Oliver Lemmons, which has made a huge investment in that community with the grocery store, they have been adapting and persevering. And, you know, they too, I think, were, there were, they were, within the business community, there were certain champions recognizing that we are running on on borrowed time and this is really the the best, the only solution going forward. How it gets ultimately implemented, what's the, what their financing is, that's to be determined. But there was, this was the the best course. And I think the Board of County Commissioners with the timing of some ARPA funds were able to leverage those resources in alignment with others to 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 take advantage of 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 this opportunity. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Todd. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Before. I was, when I first met Todd, I was of the sewer systems are scary, they're bad. I was like in the 20% pro septic, you know, coming from Tumalo, which is thinks has similar perspective is terrible. Like that means change, that mean where the poop is, you know. This is, gives you anxiety because you like what you have and you don't want change. And then you have educated me, and I really appreciate everything you've done over the years, to really explain, no, 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 this is a gap, but there's so many different factors, which you've spoke of, that goes along with bringing sewer systems, you know, to a community. And so now I've like, went from 20 to maybe, I'm 80% pro now. So I just really wanted to acknowledge and appreciate you for everything you have educated me and I think it trickles around the whole community. I'm sure you've educated thousands of other people too. So I just really appreciate, appreciate that. And I think also, like, the more education we get out there, because you educated me and our community about it. And so I think the more education and the more understanding of the limits that sewer, the the limits, like the fact that you brought up, hey, would this extend outside, you know, that boundary? No, you know, to understand, or there could be some zone, you know, some code changes that help with some of these anxieties. So I think just more education, like you've done to, you know, is is just so helpful through these meetings and community planning.
And in this case, they get to export it on Redmond.
Exactly. Exactly. So thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So just recapping this section, just wanted to note some of the challenges that we see for development. Small lot sizes, limited septic capability on on properties. We do have some unimproved streets, which also make it hard for development who in on the Hillman Platt specifically. And then solar setbacks, as you can imagine, can be frustrating for property owners who want to do any type of addition or put a home on a lot when they have these smaller lot sizes. But as everyone's recognizing, we're very much in this dynamic space and why this community plan update is so important and so critical now is that things could be changing quite quickly in Terrebonne and being ahead of these changes will be a benefit to the community. So we are at our last section of the presentation tonight. I labeled this one considerations for growth. It's largely taking a look at some of the commercial development that's in Terrebonne and specifically within the unincorporated community. And this first slide here I'm going to show you are just some notes that I took from our current planning team as we review development in within the Hillman Platt. And one of the, one of the notes that we are fairly consistent on across the team is that businesses really struggle to meet the site plan review standards because of these small lots. This is the same thing that we experienced in Tumalo as well, is that developers and property owners really have to sharpen their pencils to make their development work. Even on a normal site where you have site plan review criteria, it can be a challenge to meet the parking standards. It can be a challenge to meet the landscaping standards, you know. So you can only imagine what it might feel like for someone who owns some commercially zoned property in Terrebonne to want to do something with, open a coffee shop, open a restaurant, but then to be be blocked by, you know, not being able to to meet the criteria in the in the site plan review. The other thing that was highlighted was just kind of the the difficult nature of pedestrian oriented development for those commercially zoned properties that are along 97. And it can be somewhat intimidating to be out on on your feet along Highway 97, which can be somewhat recognized as a freight corridor in certain respects. So thinking about the commercial zoning in Terrebonne is going to be critical when we're thinking about economic growth in the unincorporated community and what it might mean for to explore other options, you know, off Highway 97, right? As I was pointing out in the commercial district there, that it's 11th Street, which is actually right in the middle of the commercial zoning, you know. And there may be some other opportunities that might present themselves, you know, as we engage the community, as we start talking with business owners and begin to kind of think about what that might mean, what the comp plan designation is intended to support in terms of development and pedestrian, you know, oriented commercial centers. So Chair Cyrus, you also mentioned that too, just just recognizing that, you know, in the greater Terrebonne area, we have other things happening and there might be some types of commercial development that might be more adequately situated on some of these side streets or positioned differently. So these are just a couple of notes from the the current planning team that we wanted to share with you. We do also have some some good examples of commercial development in the unincorporated community. These are some of the more recent site plan review and approvals that we've done in on the current planning team. Oliver Lemmons, their last approval was in 2021 for an expansion, Northwest Self-Storage, or sorry, Northwest Self-Storage in 2019. Brand 44 in 2023. V-Works Concrete Mixing was approved in 2022 and we're working with that property owner currently. Organ Trailers, they received an approval in 2023. So these commercial centers, they do exist, it is possible. This next slide is to kind of turn the attention outward into Greater Terrebonne. We do have two different types of classifications of activity that we see that could be influential to the unincorporated community. The first category is the agritourism, which are really, you know, commercial ventures on, you know, farm zone property. Some good examples of that are Smith Rock Ranch, DND Ranch, Crescent Moon Ranch, Faith, Hope and Charity Vineyards. As far as the recreational classification, of course, Smith Rock State Park, you know, they draw, you know, hundreds of thousands of visitors annually, right? Which has big implications for, you know, economic growth and opportunity with inside the unincorporated community. So just thinking about, you know, the implications of these types of enterprises and thinking about, you know, what might be possible as we begin to kind of engage the community and talk about what might be possible in terms of code updates and plan updates. So Todd did mention the connection to the wastewater treatment facility in in Redmond as being, you know, a massive infrastructure project. We also did want to highlight the road construction that's happening there in Terrebonne now, specifically with the Dogbone up at Northwest Lower Bridge Way. And then also as part of that plan, there are improvements scheduled for 11th Street in Terrebonne. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. ODOT hasn't released any type of project specific information as far as elevations or what we can expect for any changes there, but we are watching that. You are also, as I understand, are also very aware, just talking with Tarek Rawlings, our senior transportation planner, on, you know, what's happening in the county. And I have us coordinating with Tarek as well. There are a number of different maintenance projects that are also scheduled to happen as well. The Dogbone is scheduled to be completed in October of 2026. But this, these types of projects could have major implications for changes in the unincorporated community. It's also important to note that we don't know exactly what's being prioritized by ODOT right now. As we all are well aware, there were some some budget issues with ODOT in the in the state. And so we're waiting for that to kind of be worked out and then we'll be checking with Tarek a little bit later just to kind of understand what is on the priority list for ODOT in terms of improvements. So in closing, we hope this presentation was informative and improved your understanding of Terrebonne and some of the more salient issues that we're looking at in the in the planning division. I have on this last slide just three questions, which generally represent how we approach planning processes. You know, in that, you know, we want to hear from the community about opportunities and challenges. We want to create a planning process that addresses those opportunities and challenges recognized by the community. And then lastly, we want to know who else needs to be at the table to ensure that the community is supported and that those changes are viable and sustainable. So I will kind of close on that and open it up to the planning commission for any questions you might have on the information we provided in this last little segment, if there are any questions.
Right, any questions? Nope. All right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
And open it up, I guess, the next item on the agenda is is staff comments. Any, do you have any other comments you'd like to offer?
I just appreciate the opportunity to to present on Terrebonne and you're a great audience. So thank you for your very thoughtful questions and I'm looking forward to seeing the work that you do as you engage this plan update process. I think it's going to be a very dynamic conversation for all the reasons mentioned tonight. And, yeah, looking forward to it.
Well, we appreciate the background. So, well.
Yeah, again, thanks to, thanks to Nathaniel. Really appreciate the opportunity for both him to put together the excellent presentation. And it's something, you know, coming out of the Tumalo experience that we realized that maybe a little more background at the beginning would help the planning. that we realized that maybe a little more background at the beginning would help the planning commission orient to the types of issues and questions you'd be dealing with. So hopefully you found this helpful. Wanted to give you an update on a couple of other items. So at the board on Monday, Kyle was talking to them about R327. So that's a fire hardening standards. Um, the state, uh, the building codes have been updated temporarily for R327 standards. These are standards that have to do with uh, house siding, roofing, windows, other things to uh, maximize uh, home hardened uh, status with relationship to wildfires. And uh, the way that the state has set this up is it's optional for jurisdictions to require this under the building code. It's a little bit interesting in that it's a, it's a one size fits all in the sense that you can either as a jurisdiction, implement these R327 standards that uh, that increase a home's resilience to wildfire, or you can not. And so there was some question for the board about how they'd like to see the community engaged. And they ultimately said that they did want to see that brought before the planning commission. So it's our intention at your next meeting, which is on December 11th. It's a, your only meeting for the remainder of the year due to the holidays, uh, Thanksgiving and the winter holidays. That um, you'll be receiving both a work session and conducting a public hearing on that same date on R327. So Kyle will bring you an extensive presentation. You'll also be able to receive testimony on that date.
The work session and the public hearing on the same day?
That's correct. And it it stems in part because the board's identified this as a priority and this is uh, you're gonna, in a time period when you normally would have had three meetings, you have one.
Will the public hearing be before or after the work session?
After, so that the public can benefit from the work session as well, definitely. So everybody gets a chance to get oriented to it and then you have an opportunity to take some testimony on that topic. Excited, uh, got some staff changes coming up. So uh, we've got a new assistant planner starting on Monday. So in the current planning division, really excited to have that additional resource. Jacob Ripper, who is my other principal planner and current uh, planning has taken a excellent opportunity in private industry. And so we're doing some staff shifting around. And accordingly, um, the uh, the principal planner, we've got a open recruitment right now for principal planner in long range. So uh, that's an external recruitment and we'll see what kind of candidates we get. That uh, that position opportunity closes for applications tonight at midnight. I'm going to try to go to bed and not look at 12:01 to see who applied. We'll be, we were all interested to see uh, what kind of turnout we got for that, but you'll see uh, as a result of that, I'm kind of a new, either a new staff member or a existing staff member in a new capacity, providing additional resources to our long range division. So that's exciting. Tanya, I might have you come up and talk about uh, solar stuff.
Thanks again to Nathaniel. Um, thanks for doing this. Um, and I've heard the word on the street of that he's really good at community engagement. So we'll be roping him in in the future to future meetings. Thanks in advance. He didn't hear anything I said.
Just to say Commissioner Stockcamp, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. It had me off as panelist and it just got to me to rejoin. So thanks for adding me back in, Adam, or whoever was able to. Sorry to interrupt, Tanya. It was a question for Nathaniel uh, regarding the Terrebonne plan. I was just curious, is there a role that Oregon State Parks plans on playing coming up here or like any involvement in it? Just with with the sheer number of visitors that come through Terrebonne area to get to the state park. I was curious if they play a role coming up here.
Let me answer that?
Yeah, would you mind?
Sure. Um, so the plan is they will probably be an identified stakeholder group that will be at the table for some of the meetings and the community meetings. Obviously their their jurisdiction is slightly different, but they are, as as Nathaniel mentioned, you know, it's part of that whole universe of the Terrebonne, the greater Terrebonne community. So we, we intend to reach out to them and have them provide input on kind of what they're doing, what their plans are, and just have them be at the table. That's as far as we know um, right now. That's the level of detail that we, we have. But yeah, they are an important player in the, in the community. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that. They seem like a major stakeholder. So sorry.
No, not at all.
All right, go ahead. Thank you.
Yes. Um, what was I doing? Oh, I was, I was thinking Nathaniel again and I'm committing him to future of community engagement projects. Thanks. So yesterday, yesterday, um, this has been a very strange week with the Tuesday holiday. But um, yesterday I was at the Board of County Commissioners to discuss options for Eastern Oregon solar siting. I don't know if anybody is familiar with this. Um, it is some rulemaking that uh, happened. The DLCD completed uh, June of this year and basically it provides options to counties um, in Eastern Oregon, which we are considered part of, um, to allow larger solar facilities, solar energy generation facilities than previously allowed, under certain conditions. So um, basically we have a set of rules that are in place now that have been in place that allow uh, solar facilities to be sited up to certain acreages, depending on the type of, this is in farmland, in exclusive farm use land. And those have been the rules. So now they've opened up um, a new potential channel that allows for higher limits, larger projects. With the caveat that you have to meet a whole bunch of state level criteria um, first. So there, the idea behind this was that they wanted to facilitate more, more solar development, but also be cognizant of protecting natural resources. So you're not allowed to do it in certain wildlife areas. You're not allowed to do it in the metolius um, critical uh, area of critical concern. That uh, you can't do it in urban reserve. You cannot do it in irrigated farmland. There's a whole list of of criteria. Those are kind of the biggest ones. So you have to meet those, those conditions first in order to essentially unlock these larger potential allowances. It would also require applicants um, looking for that size of project to do a bunch of mitigation exercises to calculate agricultural land mitigation, um, community benefits, um, calculations that they prescribed very specifically in the rule. As well as temporary workforce housing, um, and probably missing a couple of things. But those are the, those are the largest things that people would have to comply with. A third option um, was to unlock even larger potential areas. If the county went through an extensive, basically another a goal five exercise um, to to uh, determine what areas the county wants to be eligible for solar, solar farms. And that was also subject to a lot of criteria. So that would have been a process very similar to the mule deer process. So drawing a polygon and figuring out kind of where you want this stuff to be allowed and where you don't. Not to say that it's going to be built there, but that would be the allowable universe if someone wanted to apply. That would be a significant undertaking, um, a lot of public outreach, um, that type of thing. So um, with those three options, I began the conversation with the board in September and we um, continued the conversation yesterday. And yesterday the board opted to stick with the, the existing rules. So this is referred to as as opting out of the new rules. Um, and they decided that they are, it was a two to, two to one vote. They're, they're good with the current scenario. Um, we haven't had, as as Peter and Will know, um, we haven't had a ton of of these projects. This is not, the land in Deschutes County is definitely more parcellized than the stuff that's further out east that really has kind of these big opportunities. So it's not quite a perfect fit for uh, like the rules for a county like Deschutes County. So we've had, was it five or six um, solar developments in the last decade, I believe. And they're all about 100 acres um, each, give or take average. So the decision from the board was to stick with the existing rules um, for solar siting. That's a very long winded recap of that, but I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you.
Um, and one, just one other thing. Um, it's a housekeeping thing. I'm not sure if when you approved the minutes, there were two sets of minutes. Did I, was that?
Well, you are correct. Uh, October.
It was the ninth and the 23rd. Yeah. Just wanted to make sure that was okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Clarify the approval if we know like who was here on the ninth and who was here on the 23rd, because it was unanimous across.
We'll tell the robot to reflect.
Thank you. Did you have anything else? All right, Peter.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Uh, a couple of remarks, just to build on Tanya's overview of the Eastern Oregon solar siting. She coordinated with Department of Land Conservation and Development. So the uh, decision to opt out, which was done by resolution, was um, you would have thought like, oh, if you're going to opt out of solar, that requires a comprehensive plan amendment or a uh, a typical legislative amendment that where we would have gone before the planning commission. I just wanted to respectfully acknowledge it wasn't necessary. We had a short period of time where the board, the board basically had to make a decision by the end of the calendar year. And they could, they could make this decision in a way that wasn't a land use decision. It was just by this resolution. So we were very thoughtful about, you know, uh, how to engage the planning commissioner or not. One of Tanya's earlier uh, coordination meetings as she was table setting this matter with the board later, earlier this summer, the board was inclined just to keep the conversation with them. So I just, uh, you, you might have been interested in this, but it was just a um, narrow issue that just required a policy direction. And as, as Tanya noted, we're just not in the solar stratosphere uh, when you compare us to other Eastern Oregon counties. For example, Morro County has a FSEC, the Energy Facility Siting Council. So if solar projects are big enough, you, they go, they, 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 they go around the local land use process and they go to the state. Morro County has approved 20,000 acres for solar farms. And you know, with a solar farm being several thousand acres in size and generating massive amounts of energy. Ours, we haven't approved a solar farm since I want to say uh, like 2015, 2016. It was during a time when you may recall California was, they first released the renewable portfolio and they were willing to buy renewable energy from, from outside of state. And I think some, some of, anecdotally, some of the solar projects that are here were taking advantage of that. California quickly realized, you know what, we want to incentivize renewable energy in our state. And so I don't know if that was a cause in effect, but um, as, as Tanya noted, our county is there's so many counties that are sparsely populated that have eligible land for farmland that isn't in sage grouse. That was a factor that really limits the type of solar development. I think if we didn't have sage grouse, we likely would have seen the types of solar projects that you see uh, as you work your way along the Columbia Gorge or further east.
Don't, don't server farms drive a fair amount of that, some of those rural?
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're right, especially the, the, yes, I think there uh, even as we go forward, you probably are, are reading that with the interest and investment in artificial intelligence, you know, they're putting the more data centers, they need more reliable power. And so um, I, I think those are going to go. They're going to work in tandem, but um, in any event, um, just to, I don't think this is the last you're going to hear of this issue. The county has the ability to opt back in. So um, we never had, to our knowledge, there was never a solar developer that was behind the scenes and they could have done this, you know, because it's not a land use decision. They could have engaged us directly. They could have engaged the Board of County Commissioners saying, we really think these rules are meaningful. Please opt in. It was, it was, it was quiet. And, and so I, 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 I'm not, my own interpretation of that is just, we're, we're not the sweet spot for, for, for uh, for solar projects that you would see in other, other areas of our, of our state on the eastern side of the divide. I just wanted to let you know that um, on December 3rd, the Board of County Commissioners is going to be receiving, is going to making a respectful request and we'll give you an update on this on, the Board, City of Ben is asking for a sequential review for their forthcoming bend urban growth boundary. And so um, I think Nicole's leading that coordination effort. But in your meeting uh, in, in December on the, um, on the 11th, which Nicole can give you the details. But as I understand it, uh, urban growth boundaries are complicated. Um, there's a certain amount of, um, there's safeguards if you can, uh, if locally, and in this case, the Board of County Commissioners, which has final local decision authority, decision-making authority. If they agree on bringing back, bringing the UGB in installments. So you, you, you approve it in phases and then by the time you get probably to the, to the line on the, on the map, it's, that's all you're focusing on as opposed to the nuances of the justification. So that's going to be the respectful request and Nicole can give you the details, but um, that's going to happen on December 3rd. You may have also heard that uh, McKenzie Meadows, the quasi judicial project that was rezoning, wanting to rezone out of uh, forest zoned land near Sisters. It was appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals and Sisters City Council um, recently directed their staff to go forward with the UGB uh, amendment and not consider McKenzie Meadows. And so I wanted to let you know, Will's team is, is coordinating with Scott Woodford, the Community Development Director from Sisters next month. And Scott recently sent a, an email, the City of Sisters wants to initiate, wants to initiate their UGB amendment, which would be a legislative process, meaning it's coming to you uh, as a starting point, as well as Sisters City Council. They want to initiate that application in January. So um, a teaser, in 20, early 2026, you're going to have an opportunity to learn about the Sisters Urban Growth Boundary Amendment and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Is the um, is the county actually going to defend the, the appeal on the?
That's a question, that's a question for Stephanie and we can get back to you.
I was just curious. I know sometimes they let the applicant go it alone and sometimes the county takes the lead on that.
We can um, get, bring that answer back to you next month. Um, we just recently, we saw the notice of intent to appeal. So great question and I don't know the answer to that. Um, I wanted to also let you know, I think you're aware that uh, Central Oregon Land Watch and Thousand Friends of Oregon, Will, Will brought this up a few meetings ago, had submitted a notice of intent to petition for an enforcement order as it pertains to um, how the county has processed applications, individual applications to zone out of exclusive farm use. Well, we just got notice today that there's a second notice of intent to appeal, excuse me, that's not it. Notice of intent to petition for an enforcement order by both organizations as it pertains to non-farm dwellings. So we have 60 days to reply. Um, I have not had a chance to, to, to uh, review the, the basis for um, that uh, uh, petition request. But in, at your next meeting, we'll, we'll share with you, uh, Will's team can, can share with you and our Stephanie can, since it's largely going to be driven by legal counsel, um, can, can give you more context. But just want to let you know that's, we just discovered that, uh, real, just received uh, the notice of, of that intent to petition. The, the only other two things uh, which are uh, not related to land use is I wanted to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving with your friends and family. And uh, a shout out to Adam for handling audio, audio visual. Thank you for, for doing that. Um, and so I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Kieris.
I just thought the presentation was really good. Um, I really appreciated hearing about the history and just the overall context. You guys are absolutely right. It just makes the whole thing easier to process. So thank you very much.
I would agree with Commissioner Kieris.
Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, ditto. Thank you, Nathaniel. I really appreciate it. You're super concise and clear and um, thank you. And it's nice to see your face in here.
Commissioner Stockcamp.
Uh, yeah, thanks again for another good meeting. One question for probably Peter or Will. Just curious with the uh, recent uh, adoption or recommendation from the DMAT committee. Do we, does planning staff know when that's going to come in front of the uh, county commission yet or is that TBD?
Here's what I understand imperfectly.
And I would ask for clarification of DMAT.
Sure, sure. Uh, I'm not sure if I, uh, you're, our chairman is a member of the District Boundary Advisory Committee? Uh, as a participant, I think that's the acronym is District Boundary. DBAC.
District Advisory Committee.
Okay, make it in, make it into a verb.
Saw you the news this morning.
Possibly.
Yeah, so I know.
Yeah, there we go. So this is, so for those that may be listening uh, uh, remotely or in the audience, the Board of County Commissioners convened an advisory committee to, as a, as a result of a previous initiative that was successful to expand the Board of County Commissioners from three commissioners to five. And uh, currently our county commissioners are elected at large. And the uh, Board of County Commissioners is interested in uh, having uh, in having the voters determine if they want the five members, and this will happen in phases, but ultimately, the central question is, are voters supportive of having the county commissioners represent districts? To help inform that question, they created a District Mapping Advisory Committee. And last night, they made a recommendation, which has been newsworthy. And I'll, I'll let the news speak for it. And, and so to Commissioner Stockham's question, what is the next steps? And it's my understanding that administration is working with the board to determine if they want to, how they want to handle the recommendation. So do they want to hold a public hearing and take testimony? Do they, ultimately, they have to make a decision by early next year to formalize it, to get it on the, on the ballot for elections in May. So this is a long-winded question. Commissioner Stockham, that administration is coordinating with the board, and we'll, I think they're going to be meeting, stay tuned. I think they're, they're meeting on, they meet next Monday. And then I think their, their next meeting is, they meet next Monday. And then I think the, the next meeting after that is December 3rd. And so I, my, my understanding is that this conversation will be on the agenda on December 3rd to get the direction about what the next steps should be, especially as it pertains to taking public testimony.
Great. Appreciate that. Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
No, just thankful to serve on the Planning Commission. And yeah, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as well, since we'll be meeting next in December. So thanks, everyone.
All right, Commissioner Hofkamp?
Just want to thank my colleagues for their forbearance with the questions about the sewer and stuff like that. It's interesting that so, so much development patterns and city expansions are driven really by considerations of sewer, more than any other infrastructure I can think about. And there's such an opportunity there to do, in my mind, really creative win-win projects. To, to my way of thinking, one of the nicest infrastructures projects, wastewater treatment facilities I've ever seen, that was put in there, the Crook County Wetlands Project outside of Prineville. If you've not visited, it's an incredible facility. And now that Redmond's going forward with, I understand something similar. I haven't seen design concepts or anything like that. I don't know if they're out there, but some kind of naturalized wastewater treatment facility, which can accomplish a lot of other goals. You know, it can be, it can, it can be a wetlands complex, an important wetlands complex, and drylands and stuff like that. It's important for wildlife and birds, and can be a recreational amenity. And so that's part of where I was thinking about this Terrebonne tying into the Redmond project. And I, I don't know if I've seen design concepts for that yet, or if they're probably not released, they're not quite that far along yet, maybe, for Redmond. Do you know, Will?
I think I've seen figures for them. Let me, I'll take a note here, and if I have access to something, I'll send them along.
Yeah, anyway, that's all. Thanks.
Oh, great. Wanted to thank everybody, and the presentation was great. And I also really appreciate the background, and it's going to help us a lot as we move forward in talking about the Terrebonne. So thanks, everybody, for, for enduring and have a happy Thanksgiving. And with that, meeting's adjourned.